Chapter one twenty gives a city some ability to look into the full picture. When reviewing short term rental applications. Things like past complaints, parking, how much space is between the residences? That seems to be missing. Without it, the city may be forced to approve permits even in problematic situations as long as the boxes are checked. I think we should bring back a little flexibility so the city can step in if something clearly doesn't fit or has a history of problems. So to sum it up, I support fair regulations on short term rentals. I just think we're, I think we're very close to getting it right. And those two small changes will help make, make sure the ordinance protects residents and neighborhoods exactly as intended. Thank you for your time and your service to the community. Jackson?
Thanks.
Today.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Ruthane Fantsia. I own two fifteen South B Street in Sheboygan. And I am a longtime resident that returned after twenty-two years. So our family's been here for a long time.
Are you also addressing seven B?
Seven B, you are correct. Thank you very much. Um. I understand the need to regulate short term rentals. Uh, when I moved back here five years ago, I started doing short term rentals. And it really helped during the pandemic to expose others to this Sheboygan area. And we've continued to do so for five years without one complaint, without one issue in our neighborhood. Um. I want to give a couple of examples of my time that I spend outside of doing these rentals. I, I work with the Sheboygan Hockey Association and we would love to have more tournaments. We struggle to have places for these people to stay without having short term rentals available. Just this last weekend, I had six women in from different parts of the country. They uh came from Vegas, Pennsylvania, Indiana, and Ohio. They all met in Sheboygan. How they landed here is because they were looking to go to Mackinac Island and saw us on one of the websites that they could stay relatively close and still um have some time together and explore a new area. So they were exposed to Sheboygan. They went on Sharon Lane's Mrs. Jones. They went on the Glass Bottom Boat. They weren't expecting to do those types of things. They were expecting to go horse around carriage, Mackinac Island, those types of things, which they did. But without having the exposure on the short term rental sites, Sheboygan might not have been an option for them. Um, I am a full-time resident here. If there's any, I manage other properties as well, long-term as well. And I have a residential history, I have a history of renting short term rentals. And it's been good, it's been very favorable. Um, and one of my missions is when I moved back was to expose Sheboygan to more tourism. That's, that's who we are. We, we are good in the service industry. So um, just letting you know a little bit about me, my business and how I uh would like to, I, I appreciate what you're doing, but I would like to be excluded from the current, the way things are going. Sorry. That's all.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
These uh short term rentals, do you know what zoning districts they're in?
They are all in um uh residential areas.
Single-family residential specifically?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, if there's no one else, I'll leave our closest public um comments. And we'll move on to number item five, approval of agenda and receive and file all communications. You have a motion?
I'll need it.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda and receive and file all communications.
Second. Discussion. I do have a discussion item on it. I would like to um add item ten C. Resolution twenty twenty thousand sixteen regarding the M dot on tread twenty twenty-four zero five seventeen. And possibly received. Has we had a desperately just got this. It's a time since the original resolution. So we can get it and we can talk about it with Tennessee. Shrek, anybody, please?
I would like to amend my motion. Item ten C regards to this M dot.
Okay, we have a motion with an amendment to add item ten C. Any further discussion? Okay, this again, okay? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Move to item number six, approval of prior meeting minutes for the work session. June tenth, twenty twenty-five. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve of the special meeting. Second.
Have a motion by Dave Martin and a second by Mary Darling to approve the work session meeting minutes in June tenth, twenty twenty-five and present that discussion. Okay, there's no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Item six B, regular city council meeting minutes at June tenth, twenty twenty-five to approve the minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty-five as presented. You have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Forme speaking, second by Councilman Bedwink to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty-five. Discussion. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Steen. Motion passed. Okay, moving on to item seven, public hearing for the seven A, public hearing for the proposed adoption of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year operating budget for all funds of the city of Sheboygan. I'll open this public hearing. And if you'd like to, just any questions or have any comments, you have a train. Anybody on the budget? Yeah, we'll close this public hearing. Seven B, public hearing to repeal chapter one twenty title vacation home rentals of the code of the city of Sheboygan and enact new chapter one twenty title, short term rentals of the code of the city of Sheboygan. Open public hearing. We have three minutes. If you might have any comments. Steve? Oh, no. Okay, no comments. I will close this public hearing. Moving on to item eight, communications and participants, small business administration during the year extraordinary coverage.
Hello.
Hello.
Is there a microphone?
Um.
Okay.
It's on.
Sorry, for allowing you to speak tonight. My name is Julie Garrett. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience of SBA. And it's confusing people to hear that we're from the small business administration because they think, why are you here? I don't have a business. But when there is a disaster declaration like there is right now for Michigan, we make disaster loans to homeowners and renters and non-profit and businesses. Your governor and your state emergency management office have applied to FEMA and they're considering your request. But in the meantime, because it's taking a while for them to make that decision, they used our rapid process and aggravated the disaster loan program. So at least your people have something while they're waiting to hear from FEMA. I think going around talking with people and the biggest problem I'm hearing from people is that their insurance companies aren't covering their repairs, like their settlements just aren't enough to pay for what they need to repair their homes. And the good news is these loans can fill that gap. They are very low interest, as low as two point seven five percent for homeowners and renters. As low as four percent for businesses and three point six two five percent for nonprofit organizations. So that's churches, food canteries, and arts organizations, anybody who has nonprofits, it's a private nonprofit. And there's three types of loans. There's physical disaster loans for actual damage to structures and personal property. So it's up to five hundred thousand for homeowners and up to a hundred thousand for personal property for renters and homeowners. And that includes if a tree fell on your car, your car would be considered personal property. So they have those options and then businesses have physical disaster loans for up to two million. And what's really important here in the city is economic injury disaster loans. So if the power was out or if people weren't coming out to the businesses because they couldn't get down your roads because the roads were closed or just, you know, issues. And let's say their income went way down for a couple of weeks and they have this gap in their income. And now it's a little hard to make their monthly expenses. They can apply for an economic injury disaster law just for working capital to help them get through the recovery period until things kind of get back to normal. So those are the three types of loans we have. We have a center open in Indian River, the Chamber of Commerce on, on thirty-four, thirty-five South Straits Highway, maybe, Avenue. Sorry, I can't remember anything. Um, so we have people there through July tenth and they'll help your people to put in an application or answer questions. I actually know somebody here today who has gone over there, so yay. Um, and they can also apply online at sba dot com forward slash disaster. We have an eight hundred number, eight hundred six five nine two nine five five. And if anybody has any questions tonight or would like more information, I left some on the table back there. With you. And if any of you have questions after this meeting, I left my card and information with you. So please reach out and thank you very much for allowing me to talk to you today.
Thank you very much. You're very informative. I hope some people can take advantage of it.
I hope so too. So from Sheboygan County, we have twenty-six people by room. And that means their applications are complete. There is a lot of paperwork involved because they want to make sure you can pay a lot of that. It's just like applying for anything else. Like when you're five foot long, you have to show your income, your expenses, and your tax return. Anyway, thank you.
All right, moving on to item nine, resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year operating budget. And to set the mileage rates to be loving and appropriate funds for said purposes. You have a motion?
I want to make a motion to twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year operating budget. Of all the mileage rates you're loving, appropriate funds for certain expenses.
Which thing? Second. Have a motion by Councilman Dodd, second by Councilman, I'm sorry, motion by Councilman Martin, second by Councilman Dodd to approve the resolution to adopt as written. Discussion.
May I?
Why don't you go ahead, Dan?
Um, a couple of things just to note, um, in this budget, we have added another police officer. Okay? We've added a code enforcement if we pass a number of ordinances, including the rental, uh, you know, short term rental one, plus also looking at some other things, so we'll add that. Another thing you have to realize, this budget was substantially impacted on terms of what revenues were carrying over from year to year because of the fact that uh, right now, I think we're right around two hundred thousand dollars that we had to spend on the ice storm. Um, we're hoping we may see that back. So if we do get some of that money back from FEMA, as you heard, we're still waiting on that. Um, that would definitely bring some money back into our, our fund balances. Um, we also, if you remember, we have to take care of our pension. Uh, was grossly underfunded from, you know, probably been happening over the last twenty, twenty-five years. Uh, so we took care of that. Uh, COVID had a big impact on the ice rink. Uh, so we moved some money there to clear that, so it's not carrying a deficit. So that we can, you know, continually operate that ice rink hopefully at a break even point, which is, I think, great. Anytime you have ice arenas, rec centers, they usually lose money. Um, ours is doing good, but last year was the first time that we actually made a little bit of money for that, but carrying that bulk through is something that uh we did take care of there. Um. Other than that, relatively constant, uh, when I started here, um, we had about a million dollars in reserves in our general fund and right now we're at about a million dollars. Um, if we had the two hundred thousand dollars back from uh the ice storm, we'd be at one, one point two. Uh, so we've accomplished a lot with our general fund uh in what we've done in the city in the last, by the way, today is four years for me. Um, in the last four years, the staff has done a fantastic job of moving the city forward. Uh, and I think that's pretty good that we're paying in fairly constant. Now, some of our other funds, for years, we were saving money up for matches for grants. We had this discussion um back in April when we started talking about the capital budget. We were holding that money, accumulating that money, and we use that money to match grants. Well, we've been using those matches, we've been using those. So you'll see some funds that have gone down, but that's what we expect. That's what that money was there for. Uh, as a government, you should keep a minimum balance, um, that if something goes wrong, for example, ice storm, uh, that we can handle what we need to do and take care of things. But you're not doing the public any good. You're not putting their money to good use if you're carrying large balances. Um, so what you want to do is keep healthy, whether it's somewhere, I always like to go about a half a year balance to operate whatever fund that is if suddenly the money dries up. Okay? And that, that's, that's a good rule of thumb for both governments, also for your personal finances. You should, usually should have at least six months liquid uh cash to make, make sure you can make things. So overall, good budget. Um, there are some things that, as we go through the year, there's always budget amendments. Um, because you can't plan for everything, like the ice storm or hey, this piece of equipment dies. So we do have some budget amendments which uh you have uh in here. Uh, if you got questions on any of those, I'd be happy to answer whatever you may have.
Are we expecting a bunch of revenue to come through? Because like it talks about activities through May thirty-first, um, revenue is
Good question.
At that point, two point seven million.
Um, we have, and again, we'll deal with this, the grant we just talked about uh, in the public hearing. Uh, we have a half a million dollars coming in from that grant, anywhere from two fifty to half million. We're hoping to draw it all down before the end of the month or shortly thereafter, so that it's in last year's budget. Um, so that money will, will hit. Um, if not, then we'll have to spend it in this year's budget. Well, we do have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming for uh Garfield. Um, I believe we still have some money for a couple of lead service line replacements that we got grants. Uh, so we do have a lot of grant money coming in this coming year. Um, that'll be in the books. A lot of money. I mean, we've been very fortunate in terms of uh getting grants. But again, back in April, when we talked about this, we've got some projects scheduled for this coming year. And we got some projects scheduled for the following year. That following year after that, we're going to take a little break while we recumulate some cash so that we have money to match other grants. And right now, grants are hard to come by. Uh, the federal government's been cutting a lot of grants that were out there, so.
You have any other questions? You think that's the charge you all?
I just think it's a hardship on the citizens of Sheboygan to continue paying five mils. Um, when they're already struggling and I voiced my concern about this before and I'm going to voice it again because we cannot keep taxing and taxing and taxing the residents of Sheboygan. Um, it's just too much money they're expected to pay with the water rates going up and everything else they have to pay and I just don't think it should be adopted.
What should we cut?
The five mils should be cut. We already have money left over. We've done everything for the face of the fire. They requested, but we haven't, the majority of that we have. What haven't?
We have all that gear and everything that Dan had talked about and she's a trucker belt and fire department talked about when we required and there's all kinds of capital spending stuff, capital investment stuff.
And then also
It's all about.
Mayor. We already passed the five mils
Yeah.
two meetings ago, uh, so we're not voting on that today. That's already been passed.
I understand that.
Okay, I'm just bringing up the bit of the word.
But to Councilman Darling's point that taxing the citizens. We're doing that to keep everybody afloat. So if you don't want to tax them, the citizens have to go.
I agree, but.
Until the citizens tell us that they don't want to live there. Then this, we have to do what's best for everybody.
The citizens have voiced their concerns.
They haven't said what they're ready, willing to get rid of.
I just think it's
That's what you have to do. If you cut one, you have to do the other.
Well, it's, they just should never have asked of five mils.
Any other times? Okay, we'll call, please.
That, yes. Mil, yes. Darling?
No.
Sidewind?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Forme?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Moving on to general business, consider to repeal chap- chapter one twenty vacation home rentals of the code of the city of Sheboygan and enact new chapter one twenty title, short term rentals of the code of Sheboygan. We have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion for appeal chapter one twenty title vacation home rentals of the code of the city of Sheboygan and enact new chapter one twenty title, short term rentals of the code of the city of Sheboygan.
Second, right?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dodd, second by Councilman Martin uh, to repeal the one twenty and enact the new one twenty as written. Discussion. Dan, go there.
Um, in front of you, we made some slight modifications um to the definition section. And then um I, I, I heard what Mr. Boring had to say. I also read his memo. Um, if you go down to section two, short term rental regulations, number one, I think there we could just reorganize the words that are already in that sentence and change it to short term rental will shall be permitted in all zoning districts except residentially zoned districts. And the reason why we didn't spell every district out there, we are in the process of updating our zoning code. And we're looking at adding some different uh zoning districts, maybe eliminating some. Uh, this way, if we put it that way, I don't have to bring this back later on and amend it as an ordinance. Revolution is a little easier to do um than a ordinance. So that's why I think if we change that uh, number one, to read, short term rental shall be permitted in all zoning districts except residentially zoned district. So that right now, that would be R one, your R two, and your RM.
Covers everything.
Okay.
When do you expect the zoning to be held down?
I have a, a report on that, but quickly, it, it, it's, it's, it's going to take a little bit. Usually it takes a year to a year and a half to rewrite the zoning code. Yeah. And we probably, Dave, how many, six months?
Oh, yeah.
Seven months probably right now.
So we did receive a couple of email, all the council did. And we have read them and that was uh further up in the agenda when we talked about uh approval of agenda, receiving file of communications, those email are part of it. So we have been ordered into that. Is that the only change from what we had before? You know, again.
Man. Fifteen man.
Or acting mayor.
Um, I, you need to fill in the uh, section two line two, a number of short term.
Must do.
That is.
And so I'd like to make a motion to address that.
Well, let's, let's talk about that a bit. So I've been on a quest last week trying to find short term rentals outside of residential areas. Do we know of any? Are there any downtown ones?
In those.
Along and on the tourist service area?
I think there's three or four in the downtown area. Um, there's one in a tourist marina district. Not in the industrial district, but there are, like, I know for a fact that these three, if not more, downtown.
And as of right now, nobody in the fifteen years since chapter one twenty was passed has applied for a permit.
People have asked to, to pull the permit, but usually they were in R one and told them that there was no need to do that.
So these folks outside of residential areas, no permits have ever been issued?
Yeah.
Because one of my concerns is with like the zoning being redesigned, for example, the T one tourist service area over on that. Um, we've put this in effect now, those people ask for permits and then maybe the zoning changes to one of the residential.
Ready? If, if that happens and they have their permits, then they would be a legally operating business. And then if the zoning changes and something changes for them, they would then become a non-conforming use and would be allowed to continue. But if you're not legal prior to the change of the zoning code, you cannot be considered non-conforming or grandfathered in. A lot of places have gone to the point of limiting the number of units in, in the, in the city. Um, for example, I believe Calcasas is either ten or twelve. And they've done that because of the fear of too many coming into some of these tourist town and impacting uh rentals uh for long term, you know, apartments, condos, things like that. So.
So the more short term we have, the less, less housing or beauty, which is something we need.
Sure, correct. That's usually the the case.
And I don't have it in front of me. You can, some of the fact checking the painting of the teacher's epitaph that pulled me over there, there to forty.
Could, I think it was roughly thirty-four, yes.
Well, how many do we have right now? Do you have that number?
Um, we went through and tried to compile a list and there are some that say they're in town, but they're not in town. There's other ones that we can't find. Um, but back to your question, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in business districts. We have one in an RM district, which is multifamily, and one in the tourist district. Then the rest, we, we have one eighteen, eighteen of them that we believe um may be operating in the city. Because again, some of these here, we haven't confirmed in terms of if they exist or not. Because there's a few of them we think, okay, we don't think, we know some of them in the house, you're around, so.
We know some of the R one?
Those correct. They're all the R one.
Which are all illegal.
So you, yeah.
Because you have chapter, which one is many, you know, that, you knew.
Well, technically, they're all illegal right now.
Yeah.
You would have, right now, if we were saying tomorrow, we're going to issue permits and everybody came in that was in the B one, RM, and well, that RM would not count. The T one, we, if you set it at ten, we'd almost be out of money.
If you set the task, he had, that's forty?
Yeah.
One?
But they got a huge
Yeah, they do.
Huge market for.
Have you looked at any other like population, five thousand-ish people?
Calcasas is a little bit smaller than us and they got, uh, I think the population was a couple, like you said, they were a ten. I've seen the number fifteen. So. So. And again, we have not confirmed these short term rentals exist yet. We're in the process of doing that.
So let's say we have 10 short term rentals. That would be short, 10 short term rentals on properties older than residential zone. Right?
Roughly 10, yeah, 90, 100.
There was only one currently in an RM district.
Correct. And that's actually Diana, but you, so we can't find that one.
I can't find that one either. We won't get it.
Well, it's a person's name, and they claimed it's in the same development Diane's in, but Diane's on the HOA and everything, and yeah.
You would check out.
Someone, I guess, this is both hands show up on the morning, right?
Yes. Even with that 10.
I'll take the vacation. Look at her house, Scott. Almost as, look, look people in the nightingales.
He's joking, everyone's. They're jokes. Um, here. Yeah. I've been talking to my neighbors for the last week about this. I see other people wanting to run into them. And it's one of those topics where it's like, yeah, I'd like to stay in their BMBs on occasion. They're great. I think people should be able to do what they want with their house, but then when we get down to the question, okay, your neighbor wants to turn their house into an Airbnb, a lot of not a lot of that at all. And we've had feel of this issue recently. We've heard from a lot of you know, landlords about nearby who we turn older noise. Other factors. So I guess right now I'm just explaining my vote. I have a fairly favor of this because all those people on that list, because nobody applied for a permit, zoning never allowed it in the first place. There's really not a grandfather. I think the question is, is how many short term rental permits should be issued? And it sounds like 10 is a reasonable number for the business area tourist service, given it's such a small part of the city.
But did you say there were more than 10 acting?
Oh, yeah.
When then that would be possibly no people would there'd be some people not allowed then, if you said that 10.
But your answer.
All of these are. So they would have to be in, B1, B2, B3, or tourist, or actually, it could be industrial. But in the, the ones that if right now, if we, if, if they all came through that door and said, okay, we all want permits. I'd deal with Brent, based on what I'm looking at, it was, I'd deal with Brent and I.
So if we put 10 in there and it comes to pass that we really need more, we can always revisit, right?
Sure.
Making that.
Sure.
It would be carrying out the inspections.
Remember, in our regulatory process, we approved a code enforcement officer, and for the time being, right now, it would either be myself or other staff, whether it be police department or for Alex. We would start making people pull the permits and, and get everything. You know, 12 or 15 or?
I'd like to know 12.
Has that's your motion or a motion?
I will.
Did anybody make a motion?
Well, it's just like a, to, 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 within the, yes. Because the motion is to.
So I understand everybody do bring this, like, people here to the town, tourism, which is important. Tend to seems like a small opportunity.
Okay, mine is nine, right, you know?
Right. Maybe you want to choose, maybe once you are on the residential, it's in the water, you know, there'd be a best, perhaps, and this is, or that's.
I'll do 12.
So we can raise up a third. He has on his paper.
So the custody number at this point?
Yeah. So, okay, 12. Go with 12, if we need to revisit it, either up or down, we can do that. Assuming we vote this as written, now we've got modification on one or down state. Visitation may be speeding, so we'll see what, you know, what commercial, like tourists, and whatever, watching has short term rentals.
Can I say something about this? It is unfortunate that the city didn't take care of this when it started happening. Airbnb, or ease, I guess we'd say, that people didn't invest thinking that they could do this Airbnb with no problem. But I understand how the neighbors may not appreciate such things, as we witnessed the past couple of meetings here. It is unfortunate that people argue they are successful Airbnbs and their neighbors don't honor it. I understand that it has to be that way. Fill up one slide and one else essentially.
There was a, I'm reading some of this court case, it was made, and one court, one judge made the, the, the circuit, I mean, how I mean. And the state always named by the judge other people, so all the neighborhood, that's a penalty from, not being, that's a very bad.
I want to be real clear for the record, the city did address this question. Really, I don't know if Airbnb is a popular about 2010, but they, they did create a system for it, and people did invest in it. And the ones that I've spoken to, you know, they're like, well, I didn't think to call City Hall. It's been on the books.
Well, one, one of the things is, there's a responsibility. I don't know who exactly it lays off. But when somebody purchases, like, you wanna do the maintenance, or you follow the devil, they need to look at what it's on. And that's, I think, their responsibility, but in some cases, the realtors say, well, this is making or the person says, uh, you know, I want a Airbnb, they don't say anything about the zoning. So I think there has to be a direct contact, or there should be. And they're not the one that, I've someplace I haven't found where they're responsible. Who's responsible for checking that all, but as a property owner, and every time I bought property, I looked to make sure I could do what, what I wanted. So someplace or.
Due diligence when you invite.
Yeah.
It's just like buying a house and not, what can you see if you have bylaws?
And the court cases on it get fascinating. So people like what you're describing, build and try and think, well, I have, I have promised by a realtor I could do this. It's like, well.
Yeah. So, you know, who's, who's the actual, if you buy the property, if you don't check the zoning, you got a problem. It's different than what you have the lease. It might, and that's what the judge said.
See, I'm wondering if we've published.
This will go into effect. Right now, the current ordinance will still be in effect for the next 20 days, that 20th day it will start.
So Airbnb's that maybe have not gotten their permit yet? If they have looking to the rest of the year.
We, we will be reaching out to everybody that we can find through letters that are maybe registered or some regular mail, and ask them if all the city will have discussions with them.
So there's some wiggle room. Depending on their case, that they can go the rest of the year.
I will meet with them and talk to them and see what we can do. But we have to enforce the parameters of the current law, and I have to enforce the parameters of the new law. So we will, we will reach out to them and ask them to come meet with us or follow us, or we'll send them the letters explaining the process with the new ordinance, a copy of the application, the fee scheduled. And when we mail them a letter and say, here, you need to fill this out.
Any other discussion?
Well, Ruth had said that she has a rental in the city, but she now longer be able to run that as a, you know.
She'll be one of the ones that City Hall will be contacting.
This residential.
Okay, there's no other discussion items, and we'll have a vote call on this, the cap at 12. On the draft, Ruth, it is.
And, and also what I said, change in section, section two, number one, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna make sure. But I think that clarifies it much better than Mr. Boring.
All right, vote call please. Mills?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Armspeak?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
Darling?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Moving on to 10B, consideration of the budget amendments for this year 2024 and 2025 that we're in right now. Authorize the city staff to make the necessary budget amendments as presented in our package. We have a meeting in case.
I'll make a motion to authorize city staff to make the necessary budget amendments as presented.
We have a motion by Councilman Edwin, seconded by Councilman Martin, to authorize the city staff to make the budget amendments as presented. Discussion. Dan, do you have anything for us?
I think I kind of covered it earlier, unless anybody else had questions for me.
Hey, if no discussion, vote call please. Mills?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
Armspeak?
Yes.
Darling?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Item 10C. Need a motion to enter into contract with firm doc for 500,000 using the Michigan Ventures, had a petroleum storage tank that's Sheboygan Marine Terminal. That document was presented to us on our desk. We're looking at. Sorry for the short notice, this is a time sensitive, but we need to ask to be aware of what it's about. My motion, please.
I mean, that, you should.
Yep. Second, anybody?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Darling, seconded by Councilwoman Martin, to discuss to enter into contract with firm doc for this resolution 2025-16. Dan, take it away.
We've been talking about this project for quite a while. This is adding another oil, gas, gasoline storage tank down at the terminal at the mouth of the river. This grant is through the Michigan Department of Transportation. The grant is given to us, and then it's passed through to U, to US Ventures. One of the things that they're progressing fast, they want to draw down on that grant. We want to draw down on it by the end of June, so it's on last year's, you know, our current year's budgets, this, yes. And so they're, they've already got the excavation done, but excavation bill is over a half million dollars. So they'll be able to give us the paperwork so that we can draw it down. This way, we're not carrying it over from this year to next year, and we, it creates a lot of extra headache for Casey to try to do that. Also, as part of this project, we actually billed them to do the pass through. We actually sought reimbursement of our time. So we do get a check for $2,800 to cover our handling, the money coming through us. And then also, they paid any engineering cost for HRC to help us with the project and to inspect it. They paid HRC directly, so this is a good thing. It's been, had a few jobs down there. And again, it also increased our, the capacity for gasoline here in this region, not this county, but they also serve us EUP, in evidence by the ice storm. We wanted to collect fuel, so we can't crowd her, so we don't have issues like we experienced before.
Questions for council?
Yes. This has been done today?
Correct, because to draw down, we need a resolution from council to draw down on.
My first concern is on page one, the last sentence, the city and the consultant will be responsible for all costs and excess of the funds shown above. So the project ends up costing 600,000. Why are we in that sentence?
Anytime you get money through, like, USBA, or we do the same thing with the SBA, that same wording is in the SBA. Not SBA, the state grants that come through the Department of MDC. So when we did Purple Tree, the same wording is in there. They would take money from us. But we're not responsible for that project. The project is a half million dollars. They'll draw down on the 500,000. We, we, once they draw down on that, we're out of that, that deal. That's why we're drawing down on it right away. We're not responsible for anything over there in terms of any cost or anything else that are incurred.
Did you say where the tanks certain, where it's going to be?
Right there, it would be, as you're heading out the channel, would be that last space before you hit Coast Guard. Over in there, in that corner of, that north. Yes.
Should that last sentence then, and the second, our other city will be reworded then?
I don't think at this moment we can reword that. But that's how those are all struck. When you did the pass through, that's how they're all structured.
So US Venture wrote this contract?
Nope, M, M dot wrote that contract.
And why do they call themselves the consultant?
What says M dot, the city and consultant? So who's the consultant?
Consultant, if you look at the top, it should tell you who the consultant is. It should be US Venture.
US Venture.
Yes. And this was, this contract went all the way up through the state, not only M dot, but the, whatever the attorney general of the office or acting, whoever agrees with him at the state, so it's been approved by now.
What's the roundification if we don't approve it?
Uh, if you don't approve it, then they're not gonna get the half million dollars, and I don't think US Ventures is gonna be too happy with this.
But if they wanted that half million dollars, why are they giving it to us tonight? I'm very frustrated by this.
It is our, we can wait until next day, but the contract's not gonna change. That contract is, is set stone. And that's, we've been going back and forth with them to get things reworded and some of the other things changed. And that's the final draft that was approved. So either we sign that, or we tell US Ventures that their, their grant through M dot is shot.
Can I add, what's M dot's stake in this?
They got the grant money from the federal government. Federal government to them, then to us, up through us to US Ventures.
The federal government wants its stake.
Yeah, you, you, USDA, and a lot of these can't give money directly to a business. It's gotta be filtered through us and to them, and that's how they do that. SBA, US, the VA, rural development, that's, that's how these, these grants, the CBD, same stuff. And like I said, we've done this with Purple Tree, I know, and as a matter of fact, we're probably in, we're in the one for Johnson Studio, I believe.
Recall sitting in the emergency management during the ice storm trying to find fuel to keep the water sewer plant going. Of course not.
Did they give us their fuel?
Yeah. But what we can do to get it. But what we can do to get it, I mean, it's an emergency situation, we might try to avoid that. We are lucky, it's really wanted to. I mean, we better have cessation of water sheet. Not that key.
I think that it's not the question I'm having is here will be beneficial to us if it helps us, it's like this just came at the last minute. And so it's hard to read a six page contract to make a decision.
We, we discovered this this morning that we needed this resolution before we get that one drawn down. Casey put in for the draw and they come back and said, hey, where's your resolution? And we're trying to get it closed out before the end of the year, fiscal year.
Do you want to sit on it? You have a special meeting before the thirtieth?
No, you can sit here and read it.
Okay.
I didn't care what she said about you.
If you, uh, want to
have a special.
Have a special meeting after you've had time. So the question is, um, digest it now or later, about before the thirtieth?
Are we going to have, um, any more information that comes in about this? If we know that?
This is, this is whatever.
Except what we have.
This is the contract.
So who is leery about it and not willing to earn money to go down there?
I'm, well, I'm hearing Anna and Haley just would like time to review, to read.
So Dan, I'll be honest, I don't like the fact that the federal government wants to use our lorries, but they don't want to give us steam to help?
I don't know if they said no yet, don't, don't get handsy out there. I'm open that's come, I know that, and we really need it, and I think this we do. Think, you know, you drive around this whole, anything north of uh, pretty much think that Alpina, New York area across to, you know, Toski and you gotta hit hard. And sure, and I've had a lot of conversations with, uh, uh, companies putting up the power lines and, and cable and stuff. And they've been all over the United States for hurricanes and everything else. And they said, this has been some of the the, the more destructive storms that they've been to. That says a lot when they've been in hurricanes and tornadoes and things like that. And they says it's just so widespread and just severe that they don't, they don't even understand and none of us understand why it's not moving any quicker, but then you hear those horror stories from down in Florida or you know, I know in Southern Ohio, they had a big flood down there and I went back two years later and some of the houses weren't rebuilt and some of the efforts started, because they were still waiting on floods. I mean, the flood insurance money and things like that, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm patiently waiting, I'll talk about that in my report a little bit. Uh, because we may have to make some decisions coming up soon. I think you're one, one of the ones that called me about that too.
Yes. Um. Our Q and As.
This wasn't on the agenda?
No, we added it.
Danny? There's no space for public comments?
When we added it. Yeah.
Are you saying that the city will undertake a complete project in accordance with the terms and conditions of this contract? The city and the consultant will be responsible for all costs and excess of the funds shown above.
So if, if they give us five hundred thousand dollars, the consultant will be responsible for any of the costs above the five hundred, which is the company's putting three point five million dollars in the program. So they're responsible for that three million dollar.
So why aren't we afraid to do it that way?
Um, I tried and they would not allow us to drop out of it, that's their because the money's coming through us. But we know U S Ventures has got the money to finish the project. And that's how they do all this, U S B A, S B A, they all do it exactly like this. It's a standard boil, what boilerplate contract that they use.
So it's coming from our coffers and then voiding it out?
We get, comes in through us and then we send them, they send us an invoice for five hundred thousand dollars. We pay the five hundred thousand. At that point, we close out the grant and we're done.
They don't want us, um,
So.
sending money to themselves.
Nope.
I do.
Move forward. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't like it either, but that's one of those things that that's the way the federal government does it.
All the money's doing is coming to us and going out, and we don't need a line about how we're responsible for costs and excess of five hundred thousand.
We are responsible to make sure that the five hundred thousand dollars is spent according to what is set. Once that part's done, we can close it out. We can close out our five hundred thousand dollars.
They, another quality in here about overpaying. They give us an overpayment or they get overpaid overall. What's in the contract, I guess?
Over the five hundred thousand?
Yeah, if there's overpayment on that, then the city's just possible to pay them back.
They'll, they'll send us, they'll send us an invoice for
That's all I'm calling.
Yeah, five, five hundred, I think, I, I think, uh, excavation was five forty or five fifty. So they're going to send us an invoice for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we send them the check for five hundred and we're done. The five fifty thousand dollars is come down the U S Ventures' money.
So like this first part, you know, is, um, five hundred thousand dollars, you know? You can apply for all of it.
They'll give you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars upfront as soon as the contract's signed. But we already, they already have that work done. They're working on, you know, finish up the excavation, should have been done, I think, last week. We'll say that by before. So that's already done. So they already, they already use five hundred and fifty thousand. So they can actually give us an invoice for five hundred thousand dollars and we can pay it. And we'll submit it to the state and the money will come right through us and right out to them. That's how these all work. And that is probably the, I don't know, fiftieth or sixtieth thing of these things I've done and they're all structured like that. I tried our job.
And at the end of the day, Dan, I'll support it because if you've read it, if M dot wrote it, if the A G reviewed it, I'm sure it's fine. And then this has been a wonderful exercise for the community to see that we do in fact read everything and ask a lot.
That's fine, all right.
Since I was going to say, since we had that we approved the agenda item after the public comment, Serge, you'd like to make a comment, please?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to know, has a risk assessment been done? And environmental studies, and I know it's late to kind of get that information. But I don't see any reason why we can't postpone a day to look at the warrants nation.
Well, to put an oil tank or gasoline tank next to a river. Um, I'm sure there's more permits and everything else that we can imagine with the Army Corps Engineer uh, E P A, uh, M dot is, is working with them on it and everything else. I'm sure they pulled everything under the sun to do this project. There's no way they're going to let you build an oil tank or a gas tank adjacent to the Shwaygen River and Lake Huron without pulling permits. So.
Will the tax go by this property?
Yes. I, I, and again, a process is here, but I'm guessing somewhere, I think Dave, you and I talked maybe about thirty thousand dollars will be generated for the entire county. I'm not just talking to city, I'm talking all the various entities.
At least.
At least. That was his I was called, we call it the guestimate in the office.
You're saying page?
No, total, it could be at least thirty thousand, pull a thirty thousand dollars coming in. And then it's got to be school district, county, city, E M S, you know, whatever. So they'll all get their share. But what do we get, Dave? What, what percentage of we're at fifteen, fifteen mills, right? For our, our, our fourteen and some change for our what our millage is, our normal millage. So that makes up what out of the total millage, I think about forty percent?
Fifteen, oh, thirty eight.
Forty percent. Yeah. So, so thirty three percent of what we collect from that new project comes here to the city. So it's a good project.
Another question, uh, is U S Ventures in charge of the Coast Guard Drive maintenance since their?
Um, side note, you're kind of taking me down the, the ambush alley. Um, one of the things they have done, uh, and we agreed to it, uh, they're actually going to expand Coast Guard Drive a little bit. To get some of those tankers off at their own expense. So they are doing that. We also cleaned off, cleaned out the streets to the south of there, there used to be a ferry and all kinds of stuff, got all that cleaned up there. Uh, so they're also going to be able to park, stage some of the trucks in that area to get people off. Um, we are looking at Coast, Coast Guard Drive is in, in rough shape. Uh, and having those tanker trucks going up and down, it beats that road up pretty hard. Um, but I think that's going to have to be on one of our future projects. We are and again, we talked about this before, there was talk about a ferry terminal, there was talk about other things going down there. And so as part of the request that they put in for some of that activity in there, it's in there to replace that road and upgrade the road base to handle. So we're already planning ahead for that uh, to make sure that uh, if, if more development occurs, then, then, then we can fix that road. And we have asked that the tanker trucks do not go through the neighborhood. Uh, because I think every now and then we catch one sneaking through, but they're like, oh man, I I'm going to sneak through this way and, you know, maybe cut the line or something. So we had a conversation, Todd, La Rock, La Rock and I talked often uh, about that, you know, uh, facility and they also talk a lot with our staff. And that's one of the things, hey, look, you guys, you know, stop this. If we catch them, we're going to have to start giving some of your tanker driver's tickets and stuff, so he's, he's kind of been working with us on it.
Possibility about being established, but it looks up well.
Um, I don't think we can.
Point of order on this, because we're talking about things that are outside of school positive thing, can we can talk about that during this?
That's separate from the contract, I understand.
Yeah.
Great question. We talked about how this would benefit us because we had a very storm where we needed extraction and your house back there. Are we just going on doing date or do we know like that we would hope that they would help us out?
I, they were, they were very helpful during the storm. I was in a meetings at incident command, uh, and at those meetings, they, at times a representative from uh, U S Ventures in there. And, and they were trying to do everything they could, because remember, we were all without power, that means they were without power. And so, um, there was actually, uh, Jeremy Runstrom and, and the group actually was able to get a generator um, from, I think, the state guard. Um, and that brought the generator up to help them start getting the pumps going down there before electricity came on, so that fuel could get out. So.
How do you, any other questions?
Yeah, young lady.
I don't want anything more?
No.
Adam? Haley?
One more.
Oh.
Uh, I'm assuming there's some kind of cleanup, emergency cleanup, if something would ever happen. But they've been there for decades.
They are an extremely regulated agency. Um, uh, and if you ever go out there, there is a containment wall around the entire facility. And then there's other measures in there to deal with it. It, it, it's amazing, uh, uh, the uh, safety that they have to go through and, you know, the tanks is not, a lot of them are double wall, triple wall tanks, so if there's a puncture, you know, there's, there's stuff, and then if you notice around each tank individually, there's a bomb that'll collect if something happens, so. Is it, is it a hundred percent bulletproof? I, I don't know. Uh, but I know they're heavily ventilated, that's, that's way above my pay grade. Yeah, thanks.
Right.
Um, and number eighteen says the contract may be terminated at such time as may be agreed upon by both parties, by either party giving thirty days written notice to the other party, and it can be modified also. Now, do you know the reason it might be terminated or modified?
Uh, say, say, U S Ventures decide, hey, we're not going forward. That, that would be one option to terminate. They would say, hey, we're not moving forward with this, we're not.
And why would it be modified?
Um, if they decided they weren't going to get it done by the deadline and they needed to extend the deadline by six months or something. So that could be, the date could be modified, um, on that. Or say U S Ventures sold to another company, you might have to amend the contract to take in the new company. So there's a lot of reasons why it could be modified or amended.
All right, roll call, please. Martin?
Yes.
Edmonds?
Yes.
Arm speak? Darling?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
We have a senior manager report.
We've done already too much talk. Just stare us up and go home. Um, concession stand, uh, the roof is done, windows are in, we're waiting on the doors, uh, to come in. Uh, electrician and plumber have been working on the inside, we're open. That'll be done here before the major softball tournament coming up in July. Keep your fingers crossed, uh, I think we beat U S Ventures into the ground. I did mention that the excavation has been done, I know they've ordered the steel. Uh, and then the concrete is going to be put in there, uh, within the next couple of weeks. Uh, they're hoping to have that project done before November. Um, planning and zoning, we have a meeting on Thursday at three P M. Denise from Nemco and myself will be completing the uses permitted in each district. It was a very confusing, intense table, Dave's nodding over there. Uh, so her and I are going to figure that out. My Linda, uh, from Nemco will be revisiting the landing schools uh, with the committee. So we'll have two different meetings going on at the same time. Uh, staff is, uh, reviewing the new version of the zoning map provided by Nemco. Uh, this is a map that, uh, we were talking about modifying in zoning districts and things like that. Um, I provided them a map and I kind of drew on it and highlighted things and wrote notes for them on what was the current land use. Uh, some limitations on some of the land, we do have a lot of land around here that uh, it will be extremely hard to build anything on because it's so uh, you know, wet, uh, there's a lot of wetlands, a lot of soil issues associated with it. Uh, we're hoping to have, uh, these documents done substantially before, uh, January. Uh, we got a long way to go, but I think we're making good progress. Um, then also in the next couple of months, we're going to start the rec, uh, rec plan. Uh, we talked about that, that we got a, uh, grant, uh, through B N R, uh, through Nemco. Uh, that'll pay for getting our rec plan updated. Uh, and that should be, hopefully we'll start that soon. I have some questions about crosswalks, um, mainly associated with the little, um, baller that are in the middle of the road. Um, the, a lot of those ballards were snapped off, people like to run over them for some reason. And so therefore, if you notice you go out, all the plates are there, little black plates are there. Uh, we have the ballards on order, when they come in, uh, we'll replace those, however, if they come in before the far we're not going to put them up to take, only take them down for the parade. Um, so probably after the fourth of July sometime, uh, you'll see those go up. Uh, the Asmi Union Contract, um, the bargaining team sat down. Uh, we negotiated a tentative agreement, and I'm, I'm right about this. We're done in thirty five minutes and probably ten minutes, general chit chat. Um, so once I get that all written up, I will get it to council for your approval. Obviously, the union membership has to agree with it, uh, but I think, uh, I think it's, uh, a good compromise for all of us. Uh, Fishing Pier Children's Trail Project, that's the one we got to five hundred and eighty seven thousand. Not going as fast as I'd like, but, um, it's out for bid right now. Um, we set the bid line till July second. Um, they had a pre-bid meeting last week, they had five contractors come in and look at the project, ask questions, make, we made some modifications to some of the documents. Um, this project is to be completed by October of next year. Uh, because again, it's, uh, part of the, uh, COVID money. Um, but I think we should have no problem in doing that. Uh, the only thing is when you're doing fishing piers, there's a certain period of time in the spring uh, when it's, uh, fish spawning season and you cannot do anything remotely near the water. Uh, so we're hoping to get a lot of the land-based things done, uh, in the spring and then, uh, toward the end, let's start putting the piers once that season's over. Uh, meter replacement, I always give you an update on that. Right now, we're averaging between forty and sixty meters per month. Remember, we have to do, uh, fifteen hundred of them, uh, in a three year. Remember, we have to do, uh, fifteen hundred of them, uh, in a three-year span. I think what, the way we're going, we should be, yeah, probably two, two and a half years. And we'll have it done. Uh, that's important for generating us, uh, the necessary income. First of all, to pay that back, that loan, but also to collect money, uh, that we should be, uh, for future infrastructure projects. Had a meeting with the executive director of Nemco, uh, yesterday and Gaylord. Uh, we kind of sat down and talked about what they're doing for us, you know, how we feel that they're doing. Um, also putting the strategy together to get everything done, uh, so that we meet that January deadline and also the deadline and start the rec project. And hopefully get that done within six or eight months. Uh, DDA projects, um, did not really be here. Initially, we talked about not being here, so I'll cover this real quick. Uh, the updates, the festival square are nearly completed. If you look out front. Uh, got rid of the pine tree, put in some night plant, really looking sharp. And today, if you drove by, they're putting the new lighting system. Up underneath the pavilion. Ordinance updates, uh, we are attempting, attempting to update one ordinance per month. We promised you, uh, two. Uh, once we got, uh, this, uh, chapter one twenty done, our, our next one, obviously zoning is an ordinance. So we're working on that, but we're also gonna, uh, look at ordinance number fifty two, uh, which is water. And that, anything that deals with waters, we're gonna work with Jason Cermil on that. Uh, one of the things is there is a process in there where we lean properties if they don't pay their water and sewer bill. And we've kind of. Given them a little bit extra, a month or two in the process than what's outlined in that ordinance currently. And some people have concerns, but I think overall it dropped our. Um, what we had to lean, uh, I think we went from one fifty, hundred fifty thousand dollars, but. We normally leaned to this last time and again, I'm not one hundred percent on the numbers, went off the top of my head, I think it took it down to about fifty thousand. Uh, so by that two months and working with and sending out another reminder. Uh, we, we cut down like, uh, two thirds of what we had to lean on people's properties and I think that's great. Uh, we're trying to help out the community, help out people that maybe struggle with their payments and their taxes. Uh, brush files, um. As we heard from the SBA, FEMA has not approved. Uh, yet our, uh, our request doesn't mean we're not going to get it. Uh, it's a good sign that we have the SBA here and some other. Federal agencies are in, in, in the area. FEMA have been around, they have been looking at things. But we're getting close to that July deadline for that softball tournament. I know people are upset, but. If we move those piles, there's a chance that we could lose the funding. Cause they wanna know, okay, this was the pile, nothing else was added, this was from the storm. So suddenly we chipped it, it's hard to quantify. What was there when you chipped it? Or if you move it to another location. So if we moved it from where it is to our eastern dump, how do we separate that? Um, so we may actually have to bite the bullet and say, alright, we may have to use city funds and, and, and chip that pile if we have. I don't know what else to do, but I'm, I'm waiting for a quote, um, from a guy that has a drum grinder, uh, which you can, you know. You can really take a front end loader and I think they should know to take that out a day. I'm not sure what it would cost us, but we've been hearing numbers as high as four or five, six thousand dollars a day. Um, but again, sometimes it's better if you bring the person in and they do it all at once, instead of doing this pile, taking their equipment home and then putting it back. So we're gonna have to at some point make a decision on what we want to do with that. Uh, the Windigo Hockey Team, uh, this, Craig Cox, I've been working with the. I, M I H L, uh, to bring adult pro hockey team to Chaboyan. They have announced that they're coming. Uh, we're still in the process of working out all the details in terms of scheduling, uh, what they're gonna charge, uh. I think it's looking good, um, in Calcasca, Saint Naindus. And I'm trying to remember a couple of the other, uh, cities that are looking into it too. Uh, so it could be interesting and also bring in some revenue for our ice rink. Uh, there is a ferry, um, parked off of Garfield. Uh, it was that ferry, if anybody boats going up Black River, it was on the left-hand side. Um, they drug it down and they got it up on a semi truck, uh, right now. Um. I'm a little nervous because there's a lot of weight there, um, I think it's about sixty thousand pounds or. Maybe twenty-five tons or so. Um, to have that go on Garfield, if anybody's been on Garfield lately. That road does not, on the edges, does not have a great base and I'm worried that they're gonna tear up that road. Uh, so I have to have a conversation with the gentleman and. Uh, make sure he's got the proper insurance and then we're also gonna document what the road looks like. From where he's built, where he's at, to where he's going and then document if there's any damage and then they'll go after that. But I'm a little nervous about that. They gotta work on it, so. Sure, I, I, my phone was blowing off and people over there saying, hey, look, there's a far, they're dragging it up in. BNR, so just wanna let you know, we're aware of it and hopefully we can, uh, take care of that. And then planning commission appointments, um. We have to have some, we have to clarify some things. We kind of, uh, moved on from it at the one council meeting. Um, we need to have a short discussion. We could probably do that right now. Um, I did not get an ad out until last week, so I apologize for that. Um, so obviously that's why it's not on the agenda for today. Um, but I know there was some discussion I had with individual council members who came in to see me. Um, I'm not sure if we wanna do interviews. Or not. Um, who wants to do the interviews? Does all the council, does it wanna be council and some planning commission members? Uh, do we want to allow the mayor to do it? Do you, you know, I don't know. So I'm looking for some guidance here from you guys.
I think we should follow the charter. Mayor should call, we will have conversations.
Okay.
That's why he's got the call.
Alright. And I'm going to, can't remember the list, maybe a little, she's middle of the answer. How long is it advertised for? Is there a deadline on it?
I believe that in the meeting lands, it was to be posted and have it have the next meeting. Um, since we guys had to add out late, I'm assuming probably the next meeting if that's what council.
When's the deadline for people to submit?
There's no deadline.
Okay, once you wanna modify that, the deadline on it, get that back out. Uh, so this way we can get those in and the mayor knows who he has to interview.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll probably, if you guys are okay, I'll probably sit in with the mayor on those.
So remember that was the end of full permission.
That, I believe is all.
Will we touch these maybe?
I do, factor brush. So you just talked about the rec center brush, there's still a brush by the museum though, isn't there?
Giant community after.
I mean, let's say we have to pay for the rec center for the baseball tournament, softball, we can still.
We can still put in, I think we're your question, we can still put in for FEMA reimbursement for that, yeah. And then also at Eastern, we do have a pile that's segregated out, said this is, this is storm. So, but they, they get funny on how things are done. Matter of fact, you know, you're supposed to, if you have the brush on a pri- on private ground. You need to have a contract with whoever owns the private ground. And we do, we have it with, uh, Paul Scholz. Uh, so we do have a contract with Paul. Um, so we, we did that right. Um, we have it over, we have it, you know, blocked off, we have that blocked off. But again, I know the importance of that term. I've seen how many people come into town for that tournament. And, you know, they have the concession stand going on and. So I, I understand the need for, we, we do understand that we're kind of in a bad position though. If I move it, I lose that money. Sure. And that may be, I don't know how much right now. Most of five thousand, okay, that's, alright. Is it ten or twenty thousand to grind that pile or thirty thousand? And then it gets kind of a little more serious.
Is that, um, Garge, on Garfield, um, the softball game?
It's kind of weird, but yeah, sorry.
North Garfield is shut down for rec service.
Correct.
It's put down.
Think they were talking about going out. Hit Lincoln. Maybe going down, they catch one of the other, one, one of the other streets.
Going east and up loss yet?
I, I think that's where they're going, because they're trying to get it to, at one point they were talking about getting to Walstrom. Walstrom's gonna drop it in and then they're gonna take it over to Riley.
It's not gonna get down to Garfield. We've been torn up.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the thing, it was kind of. Kind of a, a rush thing, uh, and, and I think the gentleman was trying to avoid dealing with the state. And taking out a state route. So we got a, you know, timeout, okay, let's have a discussion on this and figure out a way to do it. I just wanted to, you know, whatever it is, it is, they gotta get it there. But I wanna make sure if they, they tear up a, you know, a, a road that maybe doesn't have a good base. That, hey, look, you, you gotta fix that. You know what I mean? That's a lot of weight. Go through some of these streets.
Okay, item twelve, city clerk's comments.
Um, not much for me. I do want to disclaim that I think I caused my recording. At the very start of the meeting, so, um, when the recording plays online, for those who listen. Uh, we misjudge, the recording will be missing, um, your call to order will call in applications. So I ap- I apologize.
Okay, only about the winners. Moving on to public comments. Miss, anybody have any?
Yes.
Issue?
Louis Balance. Eastman. Um. Three things. Uh, I see the, uh, Little Black River and, uh, Surge Valley are getting on for the, uh. USA. So homes that were placed, surrounded by water. Uh. Again. Lack of due care, east of the town. Uh. Last thing would be. Um. Last thing would be. Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Alright, moving on to video updates. Judge?
ZB A Matt asked me, have you been playing use very?
Mr. Danny?
Sure looks.
And, uh, housing commission, uh, met, but there was nothing.